Good evening and welcome. And I do call the June 16th, 2025 legislative session of the Salisbury City Council to order. In the event of an emergency, please remain calm and exit through the double doors you came in, make a right, and proceed to the stairwell. If the hallway is blocked, then exit to the left, around the corner, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask that everyone please silence your cellphones. And we do have, today's a special day. We have the birthday of our city clerk, Ms. Julie English. So if you all want to join me in wishing her a very happy birthday.
Yes, we do. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Julie. Happy birthday to you.
All right. We actually came really to practice what the closed session was about, yes. Happy birthday.
Please add some harmony.
Yes, we did. Thank you all. We'll try to keep it short for your birthday today. This time, we'll ask Councilwoman Jackson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will invite Reverend Dr. Vaughn Hayden from Trinity United Methodist to give our city a vacation. Welcome.
Thank you, President, and City Council, Mayor. If you'd all just bow with me for a word of prayer. Almighty God, we just thank you for the opportunities we have to live in Salisbury, be a part of this community. And we pray that as we come to this meeting tonight, that you would bless all the discussions, bless everyone who has thoughts and ideas that they wish to share, that you would help all the discussions to go well, that you would allow the leadership to seek your wisdom and your guidance, that everything we do would bring peace, would bring hope, and bring help to this community. We just trust you and praise you today and all days. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you so much for that. All right, we'll pivot to our city clerk for the presentation of tonight's agenda.
Got me all off track singing her birthday. So we have, for the legislative session agenda, we have two items on the consent agenda. We have a public hearing and second reading. We have numerous resolutions. I believe most of them are, some of them are appointments. And then we have three ordinances, followed by public comment and adjournment.
Thank you, Ms. English. I would entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda as presented.
Still move.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I would entertain a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
Ms. English?
The consent agenda, we have two items. Both are manufacturing exemptions. One is for the Pepsi Bottling Venture LLC for 2024, and the second is for Spartech LLC for 2024.
Thank you, Ms. English. All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. This time, we will start the public hearing for Resolution Number 3382. Anyone wishing to speak at the public hearing, please stand now and be sworn in by the city clerk. This is regarding the annexation request on Pine Way, Pohanka Kia, AKA Pohanka 1. This is for second reading. The record reflect that no one is standing and wishing to speak at the public hearing for Resolution 3382. Given that, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3382 for second reading.
Still move.
Second. Resolution Number 3382, this is a resolution to annex certain property to be known as Pine Way, Pohanka Kia Annexation, as described in the property description and annexation plat attached and incorporated as exhibits herein, consisting of 2.954 acres more or less into the city of Salisbury, and to provide for the terms and conditions of the annexation.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. The time is 6:05. Public hearing is now open. It reflects there is no one wishing to speak at this time. Time is 6:06 PM. Public hearing is now closed. Counsel, any questions or discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of Resolution Number 3382, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. We'll move forward with our resolutions. I will entertain a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 3406.
Still moved.
Second.
Before I read Resolution Number 3406, I do want to point out a change from what the agenda says. This resolution will be a reappointment, not an appointment. So it will read Resolution Number 3406, reappointing Charlie Sager to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for term ending June 2028.
Counsel, any questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3406 as presented by Ms. English, changing the word appointing to reappointing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 3407.
Still moved.
Second.
Resolution Number 3407, reappointing Ron Pagano to the Disability Advisory Committee for term ending June 2028.
Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 3408.
Still move.
Second.
Resolution Number 3408, appointing Robert Graham Miles to the Friends of Poplar Hill Board of Directors for term ending June 2028.
Any questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion and a second approving Resolution Number 3409.
Second.
Resolution Number 3409, declaring Opportunity Street LLC eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at 200 Cypress Street, Salisbury, Maryland.
Counsel, any questions or discussion?
None.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3410.
Still move. Second.
Resolution Number 3410, declaring Westwood Commerce 1 LLC eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at 1610 Westwood Drive, Salisbury, Maryland.
Any questions or discussion?
None.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3411.
Still moved.
Second.
Resolution 3411, declaring Westwood Commerce 1 LLC eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at 1630 Westwood Drive, Salisbury, Maryland.
Any questions or discussion from counsel? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3412.
Still moved.
Second.
Resolution Number 3412, first reading, to annex certain land to be known as Chestnut Way, Pohanka Kia Annexation, as described in the property description and annexation plat attached and incorporated as exhibits herein, consisting of 5.280 acres more or less into the city of Salisbury, and to provide for the terms and conditions of the annexation.
Any questions or discussion from the council?
No.
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3413.
Still moved.
Second.
Resolution Number 3413, to establish and adopt a road program.
Any questions or discussion from the council?
Yes, I have a question, if I may. I think this is a great idea. I'm not sure why we need a resolution. Is this an outgrowth of a meeting between, I think, this gentleman, correct? Adopt a Road? And the mayor's office? I think they were getting together to work on this and come up with a plan. Is this a result of that?
Yes, and with city staff as well, yes.
Okay, I'm just curious, because the first I knew about it was when we got it in the agenda, as far as any background on it. That's all.
Same with every other item. There's just a, just an item that more details will follow soon, but it is just to resolve it so that this could be done.
I'm not picking. But how are we supposed to adopt something if we don't know what we're adopting? I mean, if we don't, I kind of, I understand what you're saying, but we need to know the gist of this. I mean, I'm not being smart, I'm just being straightforward.
Isn't it laid out to us by city staff that came forward and gave us an idea of it?
I don't remember.
Did they talk about it?
I don't remember.
Did they talk about it?
I don't remember.
Andy, do you have any information that could help us with this? I thought this had been...
Like I said, I don't have a problem with it, but I think that we should have more detail about what it's all about. Because when people see these things, even on the agendas, they ask us, we don't have an answer for them. I mean, I know it's simple to explain you're adopting a road, but what entails it is what we need to know. That's the only thing I'm asking myself, that we need to know what's entailed in this. So we, when we come, our constituents call us, whatever, or we're walking down and they say, oh, you're going to adopt the road program now? So what's that all about? We need to know something about it, not just, it's being established, it's true, but give us some headway. Let us know something about it. Just don't leave us in the dark.
Yeah, I hadn't seen the resolution myself. And I know you guys had been meeting, and I, yeah, I think it's a great concept, but I hadn't seen...
I don't have a problem with it.
I hadn't seen the resolution myself, so, yeah.
What'd you see?
I knew members of council were meeting with members of our team to put together what would be a program. Again, it still needs to be fleshed out. This is just saying that we can move forward with the program. There's a few more hurdles to go through.
Yeah, that's what resolutions are.
Is there a draft at this point?
What members were they?
I'm asking.
What members were they that were asked to come?
This is similar...
What staff?
Yes, the Department of Infrastructure and Development.
And he said council?
Yes.
Did he just not say council? So what members of the councils were asked to come? To me, my thing is, I'm so tired of being left in the dark with things.
This is the same as the banner project and the, I mean, there's, there are plenty of...
No, it's not. No, it's not, because when I came with that banner program, I came with everything that I could come with. I didn't leave anybody in the blind. I even brought the veterans here, so I didn't leave anybody in the blind. I came here with how it was supposed to be and what we wanted. I left it up to, Lord, I can't even think his name, Allen, and whomever was in the Arts Committee on the Arts to help with the programming. And then the next thing I know, it was actually to me, I believe, given to the county, county ran, but the city is doing it. So I'm just saying, when we do something, just make sure everybody knows what's going on. Just make sure. And you can't say that I didn't say anything to you or about the banners. I asked you, I went to you, different ones, and talked to you about the banner program. How would you like to have that? And then when I came back, I came back with the information.
I, just to add to what Councilwoman Jackson was saying, we had not discussed this. This seems to be a recurring issue where Councilwoman Jackson and myself are left out of decisions that are made by our president in collaboration with maybe the vice president and Ms. Gray. I'm not accusing, I'm just saying, I'm not sure who's running this council. It is not a one-man show or a one-person show, and April has brought it up again. This happens too often. If you don't want us on the council, then talk to the people that elected us. But keeping us in the dark is unacceptable.
So...
President Allen.
So I will, and this is, I don't want to deviate from this item, because this is holistically not the discussion I think that this item deserves, but how would you like me to discuss? I mean, it's, I equally feel as left out, but I mean, there's items, but I don't...
Can I, may I?
Never mind.
No, I'm going to say this, to say this. Nobody said the program was bad.
No, it's a great idea.
It's a great idea, we just need to know more about it. Because when you put something on an agenda, people do look at these agendas online, and they see them, and then they ask questions. So we need to be able to be forthcoming, not just like, oh, well, I'm stuck. It's been plenty of times, and just not in this tenure of the council, where we have been left in the blind and didn't know what was going on. I'm not saying it just started here. It started before, but we're talking about transparency?
Yes.
Let's be transparent.
And bring it an open session and discuss the items, open session, and not behind closed doors, holistically, which is why, again, there are no details published yet because we were just, to discuss it here is idea from the public, let you all know, we discuss it of what is it we would like. But, I mean, I'll bring up an option of, or the communities, and I knew exactly nothing about that before it was brought to me at budget. I knew nothing about that.
About what?
The West Side communities and all the potential thereof.
You're sitting right here telling a lie. You're sitting right here telling a lie, because I came to you and told you and asked you to come to the thing, and wait a minute, oh, oh, oh.
I'd like to get back on track.
And I said to you...
President Allen, I'd like to get back on track and use the agenda.
No, wait a minute, well, let me finish what I'm getting ready to say, like you do everybody else. Let me finish my statement. I came to you and told you, and you said, oh, no, that's your baby.
And then nothing else was...
No, don't do it, don't do it, don't do it.
President Allen, I'd like to speak on the topic of the Resolution 3413, adopt a road program. I, we didn't, there was, I didn't have a meeting either. So I don't know, I get that piece, but what I do know is a resolu, from my understanding historically, help me out legal, please, is we had, we had not one but two presentations from the man who presented it and outlined what the program would be like. That helped get it into that the city was interested in doing it or not and moving forward. Then we had city staff just think about if they wanted to do it, and they thought it was a good idea. And I think one night when they were talking about the tree program, I could be wrong, the tree program, planting all the trees, and they, we also talked about it in a collaboration that could be something like even tag teaming on the green team combination, is that correct? Okay. So a resolution is not necessarily saying like, oh, A starts here, B starts here, C starts here. It says, this is an idea, we, the city resolves the fact that this is a program that we are going to adopt. Just like if we set forth like a community center, we don't have all of the plans and details about that, but we certainly wanted to adopt it, in knowing that the plans, the details, the contracts and stuff were going to be forthcoming. It's the same concept that we're talking about in here. Now, that's, I didn't, now, if I have a question about when the agenda comes to council, now, help me out legal, if I'm not saying this right, when things come to council, we get an email, and I read, I read it, I spend a lot of time reading it, and it usually takes me between three, maybe four hours in over a two-day period to read everything in the packet. I actually read the packet. Now, if I have any questions, the first thing I do is I pick up the phone, and I'm either, I'm calling somebody, if somebody, I'm on the phone to Andy, what's this about? I'm on the phone to Deshaun. So when I don't know, which can be a lot, can be a lot, and I do, I ask before I get here, so therefore, if anyone asks me in the community, I know. So sometimes when things come forward to us, like either adopt a road program, we've heard of the concept, we've heard of the idea, we've heard of the programming, we may not have all the infrastructure, but this is just an idea of setting it forward to this is where we want to head. The same premise with a youth center, which we think it's a good idea, we approved money for it, but we don't have a contract, we didn't have an outline of the programming, but we certainly do want to get, we definitely think it's a really good idea to move it forward. So that's just my understanding of this type of stuff. Is that not correct? That's how we've done it historically, but is that not correct?
Yes, well, in particular with this piece of legislation, it is a resolution, it's more ceremonial in nature, where it's saying that the city wants to adopt this program, particularly Section 2 says that the city shall implement and administer and adopt the road program, which shall include but not be limited to designated eligible roadways, adopting and enforcing safety guidelines, establishing requirements for participation. So basically, this is just the step to move in that direction to adopt the program.
All right, thanks for that clarification, because I want to make sure that I was getting it correct also. And definitely, any council member or even anybody from the community, when you get the agenda packet and there's a question with it, or you feel like there's not enough information in the agenda packet to answer your question, you always can pick up the phone or send an email to get that clarified or to get it fine-tuned, but at any point, well before we get to a meeting.
As if the agenda packet comes out on Wednesday.
And the clerk's office and council was prepared to publish the agenda, but again, I don't believe in airing out anything, but...
But it does come out ahead of a meeting.
Reason beyond...
It does, it does come out ahead of the meeting.
Move forward, because nothing's getting in the...
Last, last point on this, I was just hoping that we see an actual document, and that, because I think it just articulates what it is and how it works. And the only conflict I see with Adopt a Road and our, is the street names that we already have, not obviously the street names, but I mean, of people that are, you know, like ceremonial ones, you know? So where there's a conflict there, I don't know there will be any, but I will have to deal with that one. But, you know, the concept is a good one, because I think, you know, we've got a fairly elaborate litter committee now, like there's 30 or 40 people on it, and it's really been successful. So to complement it with them would be great, so.
Any other questions or discussion from the council? All those in favor of Resolution Number 3413, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. Entertainer motion to approve Resolution Number 3414.
Still move.
Second.
Resolution Number 3414, to confirm the city's authority to execute the quote-unquote side letters with all three collective bargaining units.
Any questions or discussion from the council?
Mr. President? Yeah, you know, initially, when I submitted my budget, I had a step and a half in my budget, and there was going to be, I was kind of a platform to have a discussion. Sometime later, we had a closed session, discuss...
I'm not trying to, I just want to make sure that you don't say that, yeah, I know you're saying that, I don't want to make sure. Yes, yes.
What's that, follow-up?
We got to follow the rules with the close session, don't mention anything in the close.
Yeah, I'm on your side, I want to...
Concept, not specifics.
Thank you.
So we had a concept meeting, or a meeting at closed session about the concept of what flexibility we may or may not have in that. And it was, I guess, two weeks later, and it was much to my surprise, and, you know, I think it was surprising to Andy, I had not thought we had reached consensus on the topic, that, you know, the way that arbitration works is they either agree with what we've proposed or what they've proposed, and there was kind of, I thought we were in a pretty good spot to find a happy medium there that we could prevail in arbitration. That said, there was some discussion about increasing it, and now there were some side letters, which I think is the topic of this discussion point, where we're now potentially obligating ourselves to another million three, over and above a million two that I've already, that I had in my budget. I am, this would constitute, if we combine those two in a singular year, it would eat up the entire increase of this year's budget, which obviously puts us in a trajectory that's not great, number one. Number two, unless we take it from unassigned balances or from the reserve. In studying it with the finance group, the finance folks, it's Sandy, the charter reads that we cannot create an expense without a corresponding revenue. And so while we can take it from our reserve, it doesn't mean we have a corresponding revenue to support it going forward. My, I'm opposed to, and I will not sign, this second piece. I don't think we reached consensus. I went back and looked at the closed session, and I didn't think we did, and I just, I think we have, either way you feel about it, I don't think we're inconsistent with our charter. So it's a problem, and that's, we've got to deal with it.
Okay. Mr. Kitzrow, do you have anything to add?
Nope, nothing further. I mean, the resolution before you, the three side letters that were drafted and formulated from discussions with our special counsel, myself, and our HR director, meeting with each three of the bargaining units, and we were able to avoid arbitration with all three of them with these side letters. Yes, they, each of them are higher than what was allocated in the mayor's budget. I think we had a strong conversation in the closed session, and I felt confident in those discussions and representing the city in those further negotiations. Understanding the mayor is correct, it is an obligation of $1.3 million. So this is to say that we are obligating ourselves to those pay increases in those side letters. We still need, there will be a secondary follow-up conversation that needs to determine how those are funded in the immediate future or later on when we understand, realize what those actual impacts are. But I think the resolution kind of speaks for itself, but I can answer any questions before the vote happens.
Counsel, any discussions or questions?
Yeah, I just want to add one more thing. You know, the commitments we made for this year, which I think were good ones, this is how you get, you know, into a position where you're getting out of your skis and you're just, you're making increases that you can't keep up with, and this is a perfect example. And I'm just very, very concerned, I hope, you know, we're talking about 6% on the water sewer bill. We keep, we've had a 35% increase in wages in the last four years. I mean, that's a fairly significant increase, I don't think any, so, listen, I want to pay people fairly, I want to give them incremental increases, I'm just trying to say, we have to do it at a level that we can afford, so.
Any other discussion? Yep.
I know.
Right, seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3414, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm not sure, only because of the increase, the increase to our budget, where we're going to find that. I, again, I think you can't pay, I'm biased, but I don't think you can pay our fire department or police department enough for putting their lives on the line every day. But, Mr. Kitzrow, did you have, or Mayor Taylor, did you have any idea of maybe where extra revenue would be coming in that would help cover this additional $1.3 million that we're talking about?
I think we can probably depend on an average year, that 50% of whatever our increase is going to be, is going to be probably earmarked for increases in wages. The other half has to go into capital and other things that we have to do. We can't commit 100% to wages. I mean, that's just, and that's the trajectory we are on right now. We've taken from surplus last year, surplus this year. Problem. So, you know, it's like I say, you know, we need to have some wage predictability, but we also have to have some sharing of the increase so we, as a city, can continue to remain healthy, so.
Mr. Kitzrow, do you mind highlighting, especially to put Councilwoman DeShillett at ease about, when we were in budget discussions, again, we had that number that was highlighted, I believe it was 643 or 642, no, 3 in first, and then we were projecting the 642, and then we were showing the what-ifs, we had the second tab there, and we were showing the what-ifs, if we went with the most extreme numbers and kind of, kind of detail and walk us down what this increase is all, is setting us up for this, setting the city up for, but also what it's avoiding as far as arbitration and the money-saving options there, and that these were, I don't want to jam us up, that this was what the council had decided on in consensus.
A recap of our final budget discussions and our budget sessions, understanding that in the mayor's proposed budget, we had done a, what we'll call a step and a half, full step at the beginning of the year, and then a full step half... step at the beginning of the year, and then a full step halfway through the year, that was what we thought we could afford, understanding that when we had to submit our budget to council, we had not achieved resolution, so we did not add additional items into our budget. We presented to council a handful of other items, our departments presented those, with the caveat that we still had to finalize our negotiations, and that there could be additional increases coming. Whether we agreed to those through side letters, or they were told to us through arbitration, or through an arbitration process, our best and finals were accepted. So we discussed, at that time, that there were still more conversations that we had. Without going into full detail, we discussed it again on May 12th. Once we were getting to the end, we had already entered into arbitration discussions with the IAFF, and did not reach resolution with the other two bargaining units at that time. So we talked some strategy. Since that conversation, meeting and talking with all three representatives of those bargaining units, there was the ability to settle on a number north of what was in the mayor's budget, less than what they had requested, kind of as their best and final, in an effort to avoid arbitration. I felt pretty comfortable that there was a latitude for the bargaining team to make those decisions. What I do know is, if these resolutions are not, if this resolution is not confirmed, our communication back to the unions will be that these numbers that we softly agreed to are not being held, and then they will either have to choose what we allocated, which is in the budget, or go to arbitration with all three of them, and then see what becomes the outcome of that. There's a little roll of a dice of that, either conservative with the mayors, or it would be what they had selected, and some of those points are higher than where we ended up landing. So this resolution does not, Councilwoman DeShille, address how it is funded, there's different opportunities, because that will have to come through a secondary budget amendment to decide if we're doing cost avoidance, some savings here, cutting of some other expenditures, whether it's capital or operating, or funding it from surplus, looking at what are, the health of our fund balance is. This is just saying that we have the ability to offer those salaries, and then we will decide, you all will have to decide at a later time how to actually fund those increases, and what capacity they are. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes. Some of what you elaborated on, some of what you had summarized, thank you, in the side letters as well, the background, and then why we are where we are. So, thank you.
President Doughty.
Yes.
Also additionally, I wanted to remind everybody, is as we go, as we pass this budget hearing and session and season, that the biggest thing that we need to do is collect our fire service agreement money when it's due. Now, I'm really happy that we got our past due money, and that's been excellent, and I appreciate that county, but as we go into the next budget, we should already have it set up that we're getting our fully funded fire service agreement. That's how this is paid for. This is, this is the problem, this is the gap right here on that fire service agreement.
Well, you're partially correct. And I think we are, immediately after '26, we're going to pick up the other upfront. That said, that'll cover this year.
Mm-hmm.
That's it, and that's the challenge. So we haven't identified, and of course, you know, I'd like to offer an opportunity to perhaps table this, so we can get a real read, to get a reading on, a charter interpretation as to whether this is true. But I think that's the challenge, we have not identified a revenue source, we're deficit spending, taking it from reserve, to accommodate what I think was a departure from what my intentions were with regard to the negotiation. That said, you're correct, we've got a record recovery from our fire service agreement, and we will be able to cover that shortfall, but it's not recognized, it's one-time revenue, it's going to be, it's a baseline for next year. So that's the challenge, and I would offer the opportunity for us to table it and consider it from a charter perspective.
Have they, excuse me, DeShille, go ahead.
No, no.
Have they, President Doughty, I'm sorry, have they paid us what they haven't, what they owe us?
The backup payment.
The back.
The back.
The back.
They have paid us the back.
50% of the back payment.
Oh, 50%.
So they haven't paid the whole, entire?
Correct, go ahead.
You're going to pay the other half?
Next year.
Next, like in the next...
Okay, this is from last year.
Yeah.
So what about...
It's a total of a $3 million backup payment, yeah.
So what about the year before?
So...
Thank you.
There is $3 million that was in back payments, they have decided to pay us $1.5 million this fiscal year before the end of June 30th, and they have tacked on to next year, they will have to adopt the additional $1.5 million for next year. So we'll receive all $3 million of our back payments this year and next fiscal year. They still have to make another budget amendment, but we have direction from the executive and council leadership that that is happening. So we will be caught up, just like all the other fire departments, volunteer fire companies who get paid the year that they provide the service, we will now be on that cycle with our catch-up.
So this payment is yearly, it's just not the backup payment. So the resource for a lot of this, what we're talking about now in salaries, is a yearly stipend from the county under the fire service agreement. So that is one huge source of where this money can be coming from.
Why are they paying half, because they've got a kit and caboodle of money in reserve?
It's a hard, it's a hard argument.
But they do, so why can't they just pay us what they owe us fully?
Well, they had the million and a half already earmarked for this year.
You can't go pay no bill half and expect to get service.
Yeah.
Go pay your light bill, pay half of it, and see what they do to you.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the catch-up payment will end after '26, and then we'll be on track from there, right? Yeah.
Go ahead, President Doughty.
Thank you all for that. Any other discussions or questions? At the moment, we were at, seeing who was in favor, we did have, I did hear three, I didn't hear any opposed, I want to make sure that this is for the record, so if we just do a roll call, of those in favor, I will start with Councilwoman Gregory.
Aye.
Resolution 3414.
Aye.
Okay. Council Vice President?
Aye.
Okay. Councilwoman Jackson?
I'm hesitant, but I'm going to say aye.
Okay. And Councilwoman DeShille?
Aye.
Okay. Four ayes, given no opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you all. That concludes the resolutions for tonight. We'll move forward with the ordinances, we'll start with Ordinance Number 242943, I will entertain a motion to approve, Ordinance 2943.
To move.
Second.
Ms. Pleshay?
Ordinance Number 2943, this is before you tonight for second reading, and it is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, amending Title V of the Salisbury City Code entitled Business Licenses and Regulations to add Chapter 5.23 to authorize and govern a gas franchise agreement. No changes or amendments since first reading.
All those in favor of ordinance, in favor to approve Ordinance Number 2943, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2944 for first reading.
To move.
Second.
Ms. Pleshay?
Ordinance Number 2944, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, approving a budget amendment of the FY 2025 general fund budget to appropriate additional funds required for legal services. Before you tonight for first reading.
All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2944, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, hearing none, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2945 for first reading.
To move.
Second.
Ordinance Number 2945, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, authorizing a budget amendment to appropriate funds for water main infrastructure needed to accommodate future growth in the area of Naylor Mill Road and Jersey Road. Before you tonight for first reading.
All those in favor, Ordinance Number 2945, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Pleshay. All right, that concludes the resolutions and ordinances for tonight. We will move forward to the public comments portion of the agenda. Those wishing to speak, may do so for three minutes. I don't see the clock there, but Mr. Kitzro, do you have it there for you? If you can just state your name, and if you are a city resident for the record. Thank you.
Hello, Paula Donald, city resident. The Adopt a Road ordinance, I can't wait to see what that's all about. I think that will be a great enhancement to our city, and work to really get the trash, the weeds, and whatnots out of our city. So I can't wait to see how that will come to light. Getting back to Mr. Doughty's, getting into his expenses for the FY 25 year. So I have the FY 26 general budget, and it was voted upon that the council will get $100 for your uniforms. But in FY 25, 2425, Mr. Doughty, you got $830. Did you forget to tell the rest of your council that they can go out and spend money like that? Finding out that you have a purchase card that you put it on, a P-card. Do the rest of the council members have P-cards? Finding out that, let's get into not just the apparel, that I believe Ms. Blake brought up, that there's a line item for apparel, well, Ms. Blake gets $100 for that line item, not $830, that Mr. Doughty took it upon himself to go out shopping. Mr. Doughty, I have questions on your mileage for Angela Ossobrooks' open house, not once, twice, and questionable, maybe three times, holiday. How does she benefit our city? Did anybody else on the council get these invitations? Because if so, I would like to know. The governor's reception. I didn't get an invitation to that, but you put in for mileage for that as well. There's other things on here, and I'm investigating, and I will get back to you on all of that. The other thing too, I think I found, the city, $4,500. The 45, well, let's see, $3,800 in the FY 26 general budget, $3,800 under operating, I can't read the number, 1111000, you all know what that means, I'm just going to say it right here, miscellaneous account for council spending used to purchase council swag, business items for briefment? I'd like all of that to be lined out, exactly why that came to $3,800 for your budget. Is that where the committee, your committees, get a certain amount? And then where Michelle Gregory brought up water bottles, reusable trash, not trash bags, but bags and stuff like that, that the councils want to, the committees want to hand out like Thursday and that? If that's in there for that, I don't see it to be a necessity thing to be having $3,800 for that. And then at the end down there, is community promotion, $700, what's that, what's that go to? So there's a lot of questions on the FY 26 general fund budget, and there's $4,500 right there. $500 for uniforms. I seem to recall the councilwoman, Ms. DeShille, saying, why do we need uniforms? We wear our own clothes. Go back, April 24th, I think, was the budget session for the council and the clerk session. You have two clerks right over there, they're going to share a hotel room, but everybody gets their own hotel room, and it should be 50 miles or more, you get a hotel room, if not, come home. Why are we paying for you to overnight down in Ocean City?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Dave Chittington, this is my fourth appearance in front of your committee.
Yes.
This program, with the Adopt a Road, on the resolution that has some questions, again, in my third, and second, and first appearance here, I explained the program in rather detail. I also had sent out emails about the program, and how successful the program was when I was on committee back in our Jersey hometown. It cannot not work, as I said many, many times. I don't need anything from the city, other than to borrow pickers, bags, vests. I would take care of the trash. We will clean up the streets that the Green Team has sent us that are in need of cleaning up. We will continue to work with the Green Team, over and over and over again. I started this program through our church in January, to reach out to the community, to help the community, to do something as a first for Salisbury, that has proven to work in other communities. I just don't see why people would be in the dark about this program. I don't want to get into the committee, this person is not talking to that person, that's not me. I don't have anything to do with that. What we established at our church was to reach out and do this program. We reached out to work with the fire chief and the police chief, and to have a first responders, "thank you for what you do" barbecue this summer. We're working out in the fall to work with our veterans, as far as sending them letters, and showing them support for what they've done. There's nothing that we do, as church people, that are trying to disrupt a committee, we're just trying to help the city of Salisbury. I know it's a little scary, because it's your first time. Trust me, it will work. There's no ill intentions here, and I just hope for your support in the future. If there's anything that anybody needs, I can leave my information. I've gotten to know this young woman very well, since January, and here we are in June, and we're almost there.
Yes.
But I'm not trying to get something from you, I just want to help you. So, again, I thank you for your time, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, we appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Robert Taylor, Salisbury resident. I got to say, Ringling Brothers, Barnum and Bailey can move over, this council really is the greatest show on earth, twice a month. Anyway, about a half an hour or so ago, one of the council members objected about being kept in the dark, I don't know whether, I'm not going to get into that, the Adopt a Road's program, but many of us are in the dark about a lot of other things, including just looking at some of the things on the agenda tonight. Two budget amendments, increased appropriations, there was no mention about how much. I mean, why don't you at least in the agendas, say additional funds in the amount of, it would take maybe, what, two inches of line to say that, the amount? The side letters, I'm glad the mayor spoke up and enlightened us to some extent about that, because that's a lot of money that's being involved there. This would have been a perfect matter to table. I was sitting back there hoping somebody would move to table, like the suggestion was made. But more importantly, we have the closed meetings tonight, and you've already started off with one on the Salisbury Town Center Apartments, the lawsuit that's been filed recently, seeking to rescind the sale of the three parking lots. There's really no reason why these public-type suits, I mean, this is a matter of how does the city operate? Has it operated according to its ordinances properly? It's not a criminal case, it's not somebody accusing fraud, there's really no reason that this can't be discussed in public. And incidentally, my understanding, as I read the Attorney General's Open Meetings Act... Act manual, is if you made any decisions as to how to proceed in that, that has to be done in an open session. Yes, you can talk to your council and get legal advice. Yes, you can talk to your staff about different things, but decision-making on something like that, I believe, has to be done in open session. So, if you made decisions tonight earlier, or subsequently, when you have the other closed session tonight on the, on other suits, then if there are going to be decisions, that has to be done, I believe, in open session. I'll stand corrected if I'm not. I want to kind of also focus a little bit on what's coming up in the work session on the planning commission ordinance. In my opinion, that needs to just be struck. You need to completely rescind the chapter in there now and start from scratch. I sent you something today as a suggested ordinance language for that. So, hopefully, you will consider that and not just move forward with what's been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
David James, city resident. I want to actually say a couple of things. One thing I want to say is that, Mr. Doughty, you could do a good job if you don't allow everybody else to tell you what to do. Okay? I don't know if it's the former mayor or other council people, but think for yourself, take it from today on, and you can be somebody, I promise you. All right. The other thing I want to say is that, I want to speak for Pastor Craig Mitchell, who did a vigil about a year ago when someone got shot, and, you know, I wish that Council Lady Jackson was still here. We were able to do it over at Unity Square. Well, he came to me since then, and he's tried to reach out, and now we want to charge him $500? I don't think that Unity Square should be, there should be a charge for someone trying to reach the community through prayer vigils or working with the homeless. I understand you got to make your money. I don't know how much we charge people for protests, but when it comes to things like that, let's consider not charging people $500 to do a prayer vigil? You know? We've got to, like, really just start thinking about, are we really serving the community? Council Leader Jackson, I want to, once again, thank you for everything you do. You're doing a whole lot of good. I was talking with a group of friends of mine a few minutes ago, and we actually sat there and evaluated every one of your peers, and you seem to be the one, and Ms. Sharon, you're doing a great job too, but you seem to be taking the leadership role. Awesome. Get with, get with Council President Doughty. Listen to her more. I don't know who across the bridge is talking to you, brother, but they're not backing you up when you're getting bombarded by everybody else. I'm praying for you though, okay? Seriously. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening, Lynn Bratton, Salisbury resident. There was one thing that, really, on the agenda, there was not anything really that drove me to want to speak tonight, except after hearing what was going on, I believe you have in your mechanism something called a work session. And I believe in April, Ms. Jackson's defense, I believe some of the things that are concerning to members of the council as far as information sharing should happen at the work sessions. I understand you can send emails, I understand you can get on telephones and get individual answers, but I believe the point of your work session is to discuss upcoming legislation and get questions answered before it becomes a vote, and you get consensus as to whether to move something on to the legislative session. And at that point, before it moves on, everybody has a chance to chat and make decisions and get answers and get background. I remember hearing wonderful things about your Adopta Road, but I also understand the point of view of this never went through a work session to get consensus, to get moved on to legislative, and I think that was the step that was missing. All of a sudden, it was a good thing, we all kind of knew a little bit about it, but all of a sudden, it appears on legislative. There's a step that was missed, and I think it could have resolved a lot of the anger and angst and heated discussion that occurred amongst and between folks tonight. We all have to learn to get along. We all need to learn give and take. We all need to learn how other people feel and try to understand from a different point of view. When side conversations are happening, whether they be emails or conversations, to get information, what that's saying is, if I've had a question, then probably everybody else does too, and therefore, it should all come out in a work session environment so that we all know the answers. Because if one member doesn't know the answer, the odds are off, all members are concerned or curious. That's all I have to say. I hope you have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Joe Venosa, Salisbury. Yeah, to echo it, this is my favorite season of Salisbury City Council by far. So, in regards to your comments, I think the issue that, again, Ms. Bratton also stated that, this actually has nothing to do with the Adopta Road program. I'm from Jersey too. The programs are everywhere, they're fantastic. I think it comes down to just, we could have simply put it on a work session, right? Basics of city process, should have been done, didn't happen, do it in the future, hopefully. My larger point that I wanted to bring up is in relation to the union negotiations. Again, side letters obviously are an aspect of these kinds of municipal discussions and negotiations, but I think what we saw here today was really a great example of how, again, it seems that there were two conversations, one with the mayor's office and the unions and the city manager, and then perhaps side conversations with certain members of the city council who are saying things and giving numbers that maybe aren't official. I think if there were some actual strategy and everything, we're above board, these different narratives of the budget and what the city could offer, the unions would be more in line with, with things. As it stands, I do think tabling it would have been a good idea. It's a shame it wasn't. I don't think the union would have gone to arbitration necessarily, but I, at this point, I think we have to live with what we're going to do. I think we're going to really feel the pinch of it next year as we get into a worse budget situation. I don't think that's anybody's, you know, that's not going to be a shock to anybody. But it's a good example of where we might be giving up a lot of money for good intention, but we may not be able to afford it as much. And so, if we're going to have discussions and negotiations about salary, maybe have them, you know, official and not on the side with some of the union reps that are kind of undermining the administration. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Porenzki, city of Salisbury resident. Just wanted to offer my support for the Adopta Roads resolution. I've reached out to our field ops department probably an unreasonable number of times to request the opportunity to adopt the planters, I'll call them planters, other people have other names for them, on Fitzwater Street. There's a, there's 14 of them right now that basically have nothing in them, and what is there kind of looks more like a weed than it does a plant. And it's just such a missed opportunity to really bring some character to this, this street in our city. We have a number of volunteers, businesses, who have actually reached out to me personally to take action on this street, and the fact that we haven't really found a way to do that over the past two years is pretty disappointing, because I really feel like when people come to us with an idea and with some motivation to act, we have to sort of figure out, how do we, how do we kind of harness that energy? And I know with government, it's really important to be deliberative and to be intentional, but we can't let that get in the way of opportunities to really bring substantive improvements to the city without a whole lot of financial obligation. So, I just would encourage everyone to kind of reconsider that or think about that in a different way, but that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public comment on any topic? Seeing none, I will adjourn this legislative, legislative session, and before we start our work session, I would entertain a motion for a brief recess of 10 minutes before we go into the work session.
It's a move.
It's a second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you.